I understand Councilmember Osler will not be present. Is that right, Shawna?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. I understand that Councilmember Osler will not be present. Is that right, Shawna?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Could you all hear that? Is that, is that a recording? Not be present. Is that right, Shawna?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Could you all hear that?
Yeah, let me...
Is that, is that a recording?
Yeah, let me... Let me get that fixed.
Okay.
Okay, that should be better. Let me know if you guys hear that feedback again. No, I can't hear anybody.
Okay, can you still hear? Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, yeah.
Comes up with every... Okay.
You know, I, I can hear you, Mayor.
Okay. Well, just before we get started here, would anyone like to volunteer to give the reverence tonight? Okay, I, I will be happy to do that.
I raised my hand. You just, I just didn't unmute quick enough.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm still willing to do it.
Okay.
That, that'll work.
Sounds good.
Were there any questions that any of you had on the minutes as you've reviewed those before we start our meeting? Any, any questions you had on those?
No, they looked good to me.
I don't know if any of you had any questions on the list of items that we could surplus. They either do not work or they've been replaced, like the chairs, for example. We've, we were able to replace those and I didn't know if any of you had any questions on any of those items that's on the list? We've had a little, a little discussion on how to sell the chairs. You know, if we were to offer those one chair at a time, Teresa says that might be just a little bit hard because there could be as many as 200. We know they're somewhere between 150 to 200, but we, we wasn't really sure how many's out in the other building, in the maintenance building. But maybe we could, do you think if we sold those in like a group of five or 10, would that be feasible? And I guess we could always sell one at a time, but for example, if we sold, say like we, we sold them for five of them for $30, you know, $6 apiece. Or if they bought one at a time, there would be $7 or, or something like that. What, what's your thoughts? And, and what would be, if we decide to put it in groups, what would be a practical bunch to sell them in that people may be interested in?
Make it easy.
Make...
10 chairs for 50 bucks.
Yep.
Just keep it simple.
Yep, it would be. That, that would, would keep it simple, something just like that. So they're, you know, they're pretty good chairs or just, there's, some of them are just not, they're just pretty dirty and they're really hard to clean. These new ones we have, have now, will, you know, they're, they're hard surface, but they're a comfortable and sturdy chair, but they're not padded. So they'll be a lot easier to clean and they, they stack real nice, too. I don't know if you have any questions on any of the other items on there. I'm not sure any of those that we have are rea- really of any, any value, you know? Most of them just don't work. So it, it, you know, one of the options we have is to, like if we had a monitor in in, in Public Works that didn't work, we can, or not that it didn't work, but if we had a monitor, we could offer it to another person, like we could offer Jared's monitor that doesn't work very good, we could offer that to Shawna. And Shawna could say, oh, I'll take it, but all the items listed there, yeah, I didn't, that didn't hardly even crack a smile. But all the items listed there, there's, there's not any other department in the city or anywhere else that we can use them because they've all, they've all been replaced because these, these items don't work.
Star?
If, no, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, Cindy.
No, go ahead.
I just had a quick question in regards to, and I'm sure the answer's simple, but on the PCs, do you, do we need to wipe those hard drives? Does someone need to have those hard drives destroyed or is there not public information on there?
That's right. Yeah, go ahead, Shawna.
Oh, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. So yeah, that's exactly what will happen. And we'll probably use our, utilize our IT guy that we contract with through Leyton City and he'll be able to help us dispose of those properly or even keep the actual hard drives in retention, just in case the server fails for any reason. So we will remove hard drives and kind of like private information from the hard drive. So it's really just a plastic shell at that point that we're getting rid of. And then the phone system, from what I, a lot of this is just really, really old equipment that's been held in storage at the city. So a lot of it is so outdated. Doesn't work. There wasn't even really modeled numbers on it anymore. This is just, we wanted to get it on the list as we're moving forward to kind of surplus these things. I think you all know that we moved, we did get a new phone system. So the phone system that we did have currently in the city, even that was donated to us when we became a city. So in two of those units, the main admin units don't work. And so I'm not even sure if the rest of the phone blocks work without the admin main phone working correctly. So we'll kind of work that through that to see if those even are salvable in any way. The rest of the things, like the computer items that are, we're just trying to get rid of and pull them out of storage, they'll be pulled and wiped and then plastic that we're kind of getting rid of at that point.
Thanks, Shawna.
Let's see, Councilmember Lisa, is, Lisa, are you on? Is that?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, great. And then as far as our open meetings act training, I guess Brandon is still on to do that training. Is that, is that right? That's the last we've heard, right? He'll be providing that for us. Well, it's a fairly light agenda tonight. I'll mention, I had a chance to meet over at the Far West City Building. And as you're aware, we, we're going to have an upgrade in our council chambers and that with, you know, a new projector and, and screen and things. So when I went into this meeting, there were three of the mayors there from myself and Plain City and then the Far West Mayor. And he said, I just want all of you to look at what we were able to purchase with our cares money. And it was pretty impressive. They had two big screens behind the Diaz. So like if, if we ever had a chamber meeting, when we get back to chamber meetings or when they have them, they could actually just look up, those people in the room could see things right as they're, instead of having to turn and look on a side wall or anything like that. Everything was just two big screens behind them. And anyway, where I, where I'm going with this is that it was a pretty nice upgrade. So you know, we were able to do, we'll, we'll be able to do some of that with our carriage money as well. And so that when we have meetings, Zoom meetings or, or something like that, or any type of virtual meeting, it should be much better in, in the future, as well as if we have to display something for the council or the commission, you know, it'll be a lot clearer and and easier to use. Microphones will be replaced. Anyway, I think we reviewed all that, but point is, they sure did a nice job in Far West with, with what they had, and I think ours will be look, look and work really good, too, when it's all installed.
Can, can you guys hear me?
Mm-hmm.
I, I had one thing that I, we don't need to discuss tonight, but maybe the council members and you, Mayor, could take a look at this or Shawna. As I was looking through our ordinances and I'd been reading through kind of the governance of the city council, city council meeting and some of those things. Our ordinances online state that in order for us to pass resolutions and whatnot, that we needed a total of four members to, to vote. I don't think that's probably been changed since we had a seven-member council and moved to a five-member council. That might have just been overlooked, I'm assuming, since I know we've done lots of stuff with, you know, having three, three members vote in the past in an affirmative. So maybe we could revisit that next meeting and take, all of us take a look at it and then come back and discuss that. I don't know if that'd be of interest.
Yeah, that's a real good idea on a lot of the ordinances. There's, I think it's just a matter of identifying the ones that would need to be updated and then doing just that, you know, have the council recommend those changes and then I guess Reed or Brandon would review the wording. Is that right, Shawna, to make sure it's worded correctly and?
Yeah. So I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not, off the top of my head, I'm not familiar, but when we switched over to reducing the council members, but I'm, I'm sure it was something that just got overlooked in the ordinance or got printed incorrectly. So I can go, I can try to find the original ordinance that changed it in the first place and see if that verbiage is even different than the original ordinance and then maybe it didn't even get transferred to the updated booklet. So I can look into that. And then Reed, he really might know more on that because I'm sure he was around when that even got changed in the first place. But yeah, I want to say, and maybe Ryan, you were on the council then. I think Cory and the council at times spent a lot of time trying to go through the book and getting all the grammatical errors corrected, things like that. So they must have even missed that one. I'm not even sure. But these, you know, if there's other things that you see, it's always best and easy for us to do that in all, like one, one ordinance that states them all and we get them fixed all at once. So yeah, we can start going through that and I can ask Reed and I'll try to pull the original ordinance or, yeah, to see if that just even didn't, if it was always supposed to be three and we didn't update it in the book to begin with, back when it was changed.
Seems like we took a lot of time just looking at Title 10, you know, back in a previous council, that we took just a section at a time, you know, month to month to month and just went over it. That's kind of a good idea, just to get familiarity with Title 10 or the entire code book for that matter, but doesn't, doesn't hurt to take 15 minutes, whatever, every meeting to look at that.
Mm-hmm.
I, I wonder if that wouldn't be a bad thing, Ryan, as you're saying, you know, if, especially on meetings like today where we, you know, we don't have a lot to talk about in our work session, but where we have maybe a lighter thing is, you know, we throw a 10 or 15-minute discussion on XYZ ordinance and just kind of move through them and make sure that we have a clear, you know, understanding of definitions or how, how they affect us and then make sure that we're making the right choices moving forward.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a bad idea.
What do you think, Cindy?
Yes, good idea. I need to be more familiar with them and if we discuss them, then it helps above just reading them. So...
So where do we start? Start with Title 10 or start with the beginning?
Well, I would, I would think that, yeah, I don't know. Yeah, you guys let me know if you want to do sections one through 12 outside of 10, because 10's, 10's a whole book on its own. So I would think that more of these things are, the heat that Councilman Paulson's talking about are going to be in, in titles one through 12. So we can kind of, we can do that and I can watch the agenda and talk to the mayor and get those on certain days for just discussion and then we can bring those back. We just talk, talk through each section at a time and then make those changes and then bring them back as an entire update to the entire book.
I think it's just a matter of everybody coming prepared. You know, saying, hey, let's look at Title 1 in two weeks or whatever. Everybody make sure you have it read and come with questions rather than just sitting here on the meeting and reading it word for word, you know? So...
Is, is everyone's feed coming through okay or is it just me that's lagging a little bit here and there?
You know, I, I was going to ask the same thing. When someone's talking, all of a sudden I don't hear anything and then it comes back in and then it goes out. And I get a little message that says the internet is unstable every so often, but but I can see Lisa now.
No, I'm just fine, but I live up in Ogden now where we have internet. So...
Oh, dig.
Shawna, you're in the White House, remember? Yeah.
Mine seems to be pretty good.
See, what you just said, Cindy, all I heard was is mine seems and that's all I heard. And I heard that. Hmm.
But that's the same that I heard, Mayor. Of course, I have a horrible internet connection at my house, so...
It, it just kind of comes in and out. So hopefully we can, hopefully we can communicate well and if we just, we run into a problem, we, we can just stop and do it over.
Sounds good.
So is everyone glad that the elections are over and we now have a president and now we can all be friends for a minute?
His, his acceptance speech or you know, when he, I mean, it was a real positive thing. So, right. We want to bring unity, unity back to the country and it, it would be a real good thing to have that.
I have a question for Ryan about that letter from the Hubbard's. Because I wasn't on the council at the time that all of that started, I'm not sure what we're needing to be doing. To me, it seems like you need to finish out the steps before you move on, but I don't, I'm trying to understand that letter a little bit better.
Yeah, so Mayor and I talked about that. So that's something we need to talk about with the developer. So it's, it's nothing we need to address on the meeting tonight, but
Okay.
I just want Mayor to see it. So yeah, it's, it's a work in progress. It, it's all good.
Okay. So like, oh no, was I supposed to know something that I don't know? So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We will, we have prepared a memo that any member of the council could stop by the city building and pick up if you wanted a memo that would review, just review everything. I think it would be, it would just explain everything where, you know, just where they are on that development. And as far as what the city's working on, that's, that is moving forward, you know, as far as getting them a design for the, the pipe and as well as some type of an agreement for when the neighboring property, if it ever sells and that new developer would benefit from this pipe, then there would be, there would be an agreement in place to where, that they would be aware of. Did, did that all come through, what I just said to all of you? Okay. But yeah, that's kind of how it is here, too. Lisa, you maybe could give a real quick report on a dumping on the city right-of-way, those...
Yeah, I forgot about that. Yeah. Well, luckily the mayor was able to find somebody home. Several times I checked, I didn't ever find anybody home, but we did find out that the gentleman did have a tree company dumping the bark. I guess it was back last end of summer, maybe. He wanted it to cover the weeds that were in the area to kill them out. But the tree company kept coming and dumping more than he ever really wanted. And so he, he did contact that tree company and they should not be coming to dump anymore, but we will need to be able to probably have a way to get that removed and a place to take it. I don't know if that's something that Public Works can help with or if that's just something that you know, if anybody has a suggestion on that.
Are we just freezing?
It's quite a bit. More than he needs. So I don't know. I don't know the...
I'm froze right up now. Can you, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay.
I can hear you.
So the, the last part of what you said, Lisa, I, I didn't, I didn't hear. It just froze. I, I hope it gets better.
I was just saying, I did, yeah, I was just saying, I didn't know if it was Public Works that can help us with that or if we just need to get equipment for it or, you know, to help get that out of the, the city's easement right there that doesn't belong there. What is the protocol on that? Does anybody know? Do they have to clean it up or do we clean it up?
They, they are supposed to clean it up. And they have a place to dump it. Well, I hope this internet gets better. Th- this is not working very good where I am. It, it keeps just freezing up. So you'll just have to give me a thumbs down or something if something isn't, if you can't hear and I'll, I'll do the same.
Everything? And do you think it's recording okay? Because you guys are dead to me right now.
Everything on my side is recording and we're live on YouTube, so I don't, I don't see any issues on, like as far as like hosting the platform. It is 7 o'clock, but we could wait a minute if you guys wanted to restart your routers and then re-sign back on.
Want us to all do that?
Um, I wouldn't necessarily everybody, only if you're having issues.
I'm good.
Shawna, I, I really, I know you're telling us something, but I can't, I, I really couldn't hear what it was, just bits and pieces.
Yeah.
Do you want us to turn off, turn it off and come back on?
He's gonna call you.
Just answer your phone, Mayor.
Okay, got it. Shawna?
Okay. So I don't actually see any issues on my side for the hosting. But maybe if you want to postpone for just a minute and have you...
Just go ahead and like reboot your router. Log out and log back into the meeting. That might help.
Help.
Okay. Am I the only one having a problem?
Um, I think you and Councilmember Paulson might be having an issue. And he just logged off to log back on, so...
Okay, I'll do the same.
Shawna?
Yeah.
So I was in the, on the water meeting last week and I did that and then they didn't let me back in.
Okay, I'll watch for him. They don't have the same skills as I have, so I'll just...
Sure, I am so sure of that.
Do you think we'll have better success if we just went to audio only?
Yeah, I mean, if you're still having an issue now, you could um call in with your phone.
Is that better?
Yeah, I can hear you just fine, how are you hearing me okay?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, yes.
Hopefully, that's better. So um. Let's see, Councilmember Paul, okay, Councilmember Paulson's back on, so. Don't hear me, I guess we will call this meeting to order for Thursday, January twenty first, twenty twenty one. And uh I will uh give the reverence. And we'll, we'll, after that, we'll move on with the meeting. Then, we're always grateful to come before thee and. Give thanks into thee for the blessings that you have provided for us at this time and throughout our lives. We're grateful to be able to meet here tonight in this council meeting, we. Are grateful that we have the blessing of being in. The area where we live, that we can counsel together, and we pray that thy guidance and inspiration will be. Here with each one of us that will be able to discuss and review those. Items that are important and that we will be able to help strengthen and help our citizens and. The city of Hooper. Okay, can everyone here? Can you hear me okay? Shawna, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I can hear you, but your picture is frozen.
Or gone, mine's gone on my part.
Is it? Hello.
Hi Shawna.
Hi.
Mine is, you know, it's completely froze up, Eric, I, no one's even, it's just froze up.
You want to. Call in to the meeting?
Okay. Let's see if I can do that.
Yeah, turn your uh. Turn your speaker on to mute and then just call in.
Hey Shawna, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yeah.
Great, okay, thanks. Okay, can you hear me over the computer now? Is, is everybody else up and running? I mean, I I think, can everybody else hear each other? Cindy, Shawna can hear us. Ryan can hear us, I think, give us a thumbs up, Ryan. Uh what, can the mayor just call in with his phone?
Well, I think so, I've got two. Hopefully, um. Mayor, I'm going to, I don't know which one's which now.
So, so mayor just called me, and he said, let's just get the meeting going, so.
Okay.
I'll, I'll take over in the interim and then we'll wait for him to come on. So. So we already called the meeting to order, um Mayor Fowers said the reverence. So the next item is, any of the council have any conflicts of interest or disclosures for the items tonight? I'm sure there's none, so we'll move on, uh first item agenda is the approval of the minutes. Uh any issues or questions with the minutes?
We already talked about that, so I'll make a motion that we approved the minutes for last week, a last month.
Yeah, I have a motion by uh Councilmember Cox, and second by Councilmember Polson, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you, um so we've got our reports, our financials from November and December. That we have on our email, and you have, anybody have any questions or comments on the financials? I I just had one question, with the CARES Act money, um looks like through the end of the year, we had. Seven hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars just from the CARES Act, and I I know the majority of that went to Weaver County to. Um use as they deemed fit, did did we ever get any feedback from Weaver County as to? How much was spent in Hooper City, or did did we hear on that?
So not yet, so um the last uh conversation, so we sent off, sent over our last tranche to Weaver County. Uh and they did let us know, um the initial rollout, they had more money than people were requesting. And then by this next tranche, they had opened it up to um nonprofits. And other business owners, you know, more, to be able to help more business community. And they had more requests and they had money to give this last time, so they were working on getting solidified numbers. Um but because the money came in so fast, and everyone's trying to work as best as they can to get the money out, they didn't, they haven't had time yet. To really um put that into like a spreadsheet for us just yet. Um but they did let us know that um they're working on it and that they will get us some like data. You know, just as soon as they can.
Okay. So we felt like that was the right choice in the end, was to let the county handle it. Like, like we did, or do we really?
Yeah, uh the, this is what's hard about the CARES money, is I think with this next. Um bill that might pass, they said there is some money in there for cities again, but we we just don't know yet. And so the hard thing with even the CARES Act money is, the money came in and policy continued to change. On a weekly basis, as far as what we could use it for, uh what exceptions were going to be granted, you know, things like that. And also, when it first came in, it was, hey, you need to use this money within these parameters and only these parameters. And I think we've talked a little bit about how we can only do so much, you know, we don't, we don't have a fire department, we don't have a police department. And if you'll talk to some of the other cities, that's mostly where their money went, is to give hazard pay to first responders and police force. Things like that, um and the rest of the cities gave it to the county for them to distribute. To everywhere else, because they have the capacity to write grant programs that can then be audited by the federal government. Where we don't, it would have taken us, and that's the other thing, is they only gave us till December to spend this money. So the time it would have taken us to create an unbiased grant program where people could cement to us for funds in that fashion. I don't know that we would have been physically able to get it together and not be, and be in compliance.
Okay, thank you Shawna, appreciate it. Any other comments on the financials, questions?
No, I just, I just had a question on that, so you did, you were able to take care of a few things at the city office, I know the door.
So, right, so what you, you'll notice that we talked about before, so that's the other thing, right? So because there was such a short timeline on the availability for us to use the funds. Um we kind of just kind of did like, there's just the necessities for the city, so we did replace um the water fountain inside the building. So it's got like a, it's a water bottle one, not one that people kind of can put their face down on or anything like that, so we replaced that. Um we increased uh cleaning and sanitation for the building, uh we did that, so we. Uh usually, we have cleaners come in every two weeks, uh we were having them come in every week. Uh just to clean the bathrooms and things like that, we did install some UVC lights. In the restroom, and then we got a portable ones for when the senior citizens are able to come back. To the building to have lunch, that we can make sure that it's sanitized properly for them. And that's also where the chairs come into place, uh the chairs that we currently have now, there's no way for us to really sanitize those. So we um use it as an opportunity to replace the chairs with ones that we could sanitize appropriately. For for the use of the building, we did that, and then um we did put um. An ADA compliant touchless door on the right side of the city building, so. You can access the building without having to touch and pull the handle. We ended up not uh putting anything in the front for like glass. Um for right now, hoping that we can just take down the plexiglass that we have currently, we just couldn't really find a way, or there wasn't a. A good solution to still help the residents feel welcome and have a glass partition, and then us being able to hear them. Our building's just not quite set up for that, so we didn't do anything with the front there. And then the only other thing that we did purchase is some of the improvements for the council chamber. Um but we just did, you know, the bare necessities for that, so we got um some kind of portable, larger. Screen TVs, um that will be able to situate and place throughout the room, so people who are social distance in the back can see that. Um and then um we all get the microphones replaced so that. Um the original, I don't know if you remember the original microphones that we used to use. Those will actually function and work now without that feedback sound in the Diaz. So that we can get everybody separated better up there on that top. Um and then we did purchase some additional Zoom and webcam equipment. So that we can hold in station, in session chamber for our council, and if we need to restrict. Public access, then people will be better able to hear uh as we have those meetings in chamber. Um and if not, as many people in public can come in.
Thanks.
Okay, so uh overall, looks like our our budget's right where we want it to be, where our income and our expenses are doing. Uh pretty much like we talked about with our budgeting, with the exception of um our inspections. Um because that's a different category, but it sounds like we're going to have an amendment on the budget coming up, Shawna, is that correct?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll have an amendment when we, so I don't have that date right in front of me, but. We will have the first budget meeting coming up, I think either the very end part of March or the first part of April, right in there. Uh we'll have our first budget meeting for this fiscal year, where we can review the current numbers where we're at now and what we're projecting. Uh the good news is, is that we are, we haven't seen the impact that we had all feared from COVID, so that's been really positive. Just to see that and have that big of effect on us, for us, our city, so, but then we will have a budget. So, but then we will have a budget meeting where we can, uh, we'll have to talk about some of the amendments that do need to be made.
Okay, thanks. So is there any citizens' comments, um, about the city business items that you received?
Uh, I haven't had any, um, citizen comments sent in for this meeting specifically, and then I don't see anybody in the chat.
Okay, thank you. So city business item one is approval of surplus property and disposal. We talked a little bit about that in the pre-meeting. Um, I imagine all we need to agree on is how to dispose of the chairs, correct? We're going to sell those and nothing else.
Right.
I mean, I'm, I'm all for saying five bucks a piece, no matter how many you want until they're gone, you know, let's just make it easy and get them gone.
Okay. Uh, and did, yeah, well, yeah, that's all we need is we really just need your approval for the list that there's there, that we're there to surplus. And so, um, and we'll dispose of them just like according to the ordinance. I mean, really, it's your approval for surplus and then we'll sell the chairs for about $5 apiece. Um, we're trying to group them together in groups of 10 so we can get them out all at once. Uh, and then the rest of them will just, um, either donate, uh, we'll probably reach out to other municipalities and see if they're in need of the chairs at all, um, or any other group that may or may not need them. So we'll reach out and, and do those things.
Okay.
I, I wonder if the, uh, um, one of the groups we could reach out to is the, the church that's down there in West Hooper now.
Oh, sure. Yeah, the Wasatch Calvary Church. Sure. Yeah.
My brain is a little slow remembering things. So, yeah, thanks.
At least you remembered that. I didn't even think of that option. Good job. Any other comments or a motion on surplus property or disposal?
I, I'd be glad to make a motion to approve the surplus items as listed and, uh, allow them to be surplus and removed from the inventory.
I'll second that.
All right. I have a motion by Councilman Paulson and a second by Councilperson Cox. All in favors or any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. And item number five, uh, Open Meetings Act Training. I believe, uh, Brandon's going to take over from here.
Okay. All right. Can you guys hear me? Okay. I'm doing this from my car. So it's up on the audio. It was coming through. Is that, is it okay?
It is okay.
All right. Okay. Good. All right. Okay. Well, I, I figured, you know, this is everybody's favorite training, so we'll get it done. Um, but in all seriousness, um, uh, the reason we do the open meeting training is first of all, I think it's good just to have a refresher. Um, especially when we get to the, maybe the closed meeting part, just because I think that's always one where I get questions, you know, can we close a meeting and why can we close a meeting and things like that? So I think it's great every year to get a refresher. The other thing is it is actually a state requirement for us. So when we get audited, uh, one of the line items is if everybody participated in the Open Meetings Act Training. And so if you don't do it, or, or if we have some people that missed, you know, I can, you know, maybe send them some bullet points and talk to them separately, just so we don't get any red flags on the audit. And so we'll, we'll do one of these over with the, uh, planning commission too, before the end of our fiscal year. So that, that, those are the two reasons why we do these. Um, what I was thinking I'll do is just kind of walk through the stuff. If, if somebody happens to have a question, just, just kind of start talking and I'll stop talking or every once in a while, I'll try to ask if anybody has questions, but we'll, we'll kind of move through it as, as quick as we can, just so we meet the requirement and everybody kind of remembers what we're, what we're supposed to be doing with our meetings. So, um, and it's particularly interesting, I guess, this year, just because of the way that we're having to do these meetings with Zoom. And with this pandemic, we've kind of done a little bit of a hybrid. Um, my favorite was probably that one we did outside. Um, that was a good one. We've, we've tried all kinds of things to try to make sure the public can still hear what we're doing, but also keep everybody safe. And so I think we've done a really good job, but we'll kind of get into that in the electronic meeting part. So, um, obviously the public policy behind this is that we're doing the, the city's business, we're doing the public's business. And so the public should have every right and opportunity to be able to listen to the discussion and, and the topics that are before us and the reasoning behind why we're, we're doing that. And they should also have a say. That's why we have the, you know, the citizen comments section and the email, you know, that they can even send in now. So, um, obviously that's, that's why we do it. Um, basically, what we're talking about is meetings, right? So whenever there's a meeting, it has to be open to the public unless it qualifies to be closed. Sometimes that question comes up, well, what constitutes a meeting then? Uh, a meeting is with this particular body, you know, this, if, if there's a quorum present. So if there's basically a majority of this group together and you are, the purpose of that is to discuss or receive comments about, um, a matter over which you guys have legislative authority. Well, that's a meeting then. So it, it doesn't, I mean, you guys happen to run into each other at tomato days or something and there happens to be three or four of you chatting about, you know, how well the, the day is going or this, that, or the other, where you run into each other at the grocery store and it happens to be three of you. That's not a meeting. Nobody's going to get in trouble for that. Uh, a, a meeting, I think you kind of would know it when you were being part of it. It would be a, uh, like I said, a majority, a quorum, sitting there talking about city business, something that you have authority to make decisions over. That would, that would constitute a meeting. And so that's what we're talking about. Anytime there's a quorum present, uh, and you're going to talk about city business, we have to comply with the state statute. Um, the public bodies that this pertains to, as far as Hooper's concerned, is the city council and the planning commission. And so th- those are the two that, that we would be concerned about complying with these things. Um, before we get into kind of what, you know, what we do and don't do in public meetings, just really quickly, everybody's probably aware there are noticing requirements for all of our public meetings. Shawna's always done a really, really good job of making sure we comply with that. And so I know she's on top of it, but just so that everybody knows, uh, what the state law requires, we do have to, first of all, um, vote on an annual schedule for meetings. And so that's why every year we always do that agenda item where we say, okay, here are the meeting dates for the year and, you know, that we would have, want to change any of these or whatever. Um, it's, it's to be convenient for all of us to know when the meetings are, but also yet that's one of these open meeting requirements is to have a, a line item like that each year to say, okay, here are our meetings for the year. Um, you have to do at least 24 hour notice of each meeting. Um, and so you have to post that uh, at the building itself. So you all, you always will see, you know, the meeting agendas posted there. And then you also have to put it into the, uh, public notice website that the state maintains. And then you can also give it to a newspaper, um, but that public notice website, uh, does the trick of the public notice. And so you have to have 24 hours advance notice. Um, you have to let people, you know, know at least that far in advance, the date, time, and the place of the meeting. Um, is basically what the bare minimum is. Um, there is an issue that maybe comes up where you have to have an emergency meeting. And if you have to have an emergency meeting, the law does allow you to do that without that 24 hours notice. You just in those cases have to give as much notice as possible. And then you can convene a meeting and nobody's going to be held liable for, you know, violating the statute if it was a, an emergency meeting. Um, the last thing I guess with the public notice is that you have to give notice of what's going to be on the agenda. So obviously we followed our agenda tonight. And so that's part of that 24 hour notice, just so that everybody can see, not only is there a meeting, but this is what's going to happen at the meeting. Um, the line items should be specific enough so that a general member of the public would know what you're talking about. So for example, today, you know, that city business number four, approval or surplus property and disposal, yeah, it's very much succinct and to the point. So anybody would be able to look at that and know, hey, they're going to talk about surplus property today. Or if it's a rezone, you know, you had to put that address in there and, you know, so on and so forth. It just needs to be, uh, specific enough to notify what it is you're talking about. Um, i- unless it's an emergency meeting like I talked about, and you're just kind of coming together because you have to real quickly. You're not supposed to talk about, um, items that aren't listed on the agenda. Um, obviously sometimes things come up and somebody brings a topic up at, you know, the end of the meeting or something and says, look, this came up or that came up. It's not that you absolutely can't talk about it, but you definitely, you can definitely talk about things that maybe come up during the course of your discussion. You just can't take any formal action on that. Um, and you would have to set that on, in, as an agenda item at a future meeting to actually discuss and take action on it. Um, we record and take minutes of all the meetings as, as we know, every single time we go through and, uh, approve the minutes. Yeah. The one interesting thing I guess about the minutes is sometimes I don't know that everybody, um, in the public realizes the importance of the minutes because the minutes themselves are the official record of the meeting, including how the votes went on each item. And so even though we have a full recording of all the meetings, um, the official record of action taken on the various items is the minutes. And so that's why we go and have the effort put into having those put together and you guys read them. And it may be tedious at times to do it, but that's, that's the important point of it is that's the official record. So five, six years from now, if we're wondering, hey, what happened on that one agenda item or something? Yeah, we have the recording and then also we have the minutes that, that is the official record of, of how the vote went. And that's what we would look to. Um, there's some additional requirements of the written minutes, just, but I, but as I've seen our minutes, they comply with all that. It's just basics like date, time, who was in attendance, the substance of the matter discussed and the, uh, the voting, uh, that occurred. Uh, let me kind of flip ahead of closed meetings because that's kind of the next big point that always brings up kind of a question of, you know, when do you close a meeting? So every meeting is required to be open to the public. So that's your basic bottom line standard, that every public meeting is open to the public. Um, there are only certain situations when you can close a meeting to the public and we'll kind of walk through those right now. Um, but in order to even close a meeting, you have to have an open meeting first where there's a quorum present. And then two thirds of the members present have to vote to close the meeting. And so that's why whenever we do have a closed meeting, uh, we started out as an open meeting. And so presumably anybody from the public could come in there and sit there where they could, if they're doing this by Zoom, sit here and watch. And then a quorum has to be there. We have to have a vote, two thirds say, okay, we're going to close the meeting. Then you can close the meeting. Um, you can only discuss in those closed meetings, and this is a big one. Um, that you have to be careful about is you can only discuss in those closed meetings the matters that are permitted to be discussed in a closed meeting that I'll go over in just a second. But a lot of times there's a temptation, you know, you close the meeting to discuss, you know, one of the reasons is, um, pending litigation. So you close the meeting, let's say for pending litigation, that's all you can talk about in the closed meeting. You have to be really careful about that. Um, if you want to start talking about, uh, some subdivision that's upsetting to you and you want to go over that, absolutely can't do that because it's only to be closed for very distinct, uh, specific purposes. Um, it goes without saying that also you cannot pass an ordinance or a resolution, um, or a regulation in, in those closed meetings. The closed meetings are essentially times to discuss and strategize and make plans, but you're not voting on anything. And you're definitely not making any official city, uh, you know, ordinance changes or anything in a closed meeting. Um, all right. One more thing before we get to how or why you close a meeting. Um, on that agenda, if we ever have a closed meeting, on that agenda, you're going to see on there a line item that says, you know, motion to go into closed meeting or go into executive session. It has to have the reason, one of the reasons in the statute listed right there on the agenda. And, and these are the, these are the things that you have to put right on there. It either has to say, you know, you're going to, uh, close it for the discussion of the character, professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual. Um, or a strategy session to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation or to deploys, uh, deployment of security personnel devices or systems or to investigate proceedings regarding allegations of criminal misconduct. Now, the last time we had a closed meeting or we're thinking about it, there was a question that came up that was a pretty good one, I thought. And that was, okay, let's say we're going to have a closed meeting to discuss the character or competence of, of an employee or something. And everybody kind of informally knows that there's an issue going on with an employee. Well, if you list that on there as the, the reason to close the meeting, everybody knows you're closing the meeting and talk about that person. So the question came up last time as well. Can you just list, you know, all these, that it's going to be to discuss one of these things? Um, and I, and I believe that you can, you just have to list, you know, it's going to be a purpose. The purpose of the meeting is for one of these things, not something else. Um, so anyway, those are the only reasons you can close a meeting. Um, the, the reason that we most often would probably close a meeting, the only ones I've ever been involved in where we closed a meeting was the professional competence of an individual, um, or like the physical or mental health of that person, or a strategy session to discuss pending a reasonably imminent litigation. Um, and so there's not a whole lot of other things that, that you would, I've never done the, you know, the security system one or, um, or the allegations of criminal misconduct, uh, which is a good thing, right? Um, in the closed meetings, just real quick, we'll finish up on that. When you're in the closed meeting, you still have to, except in a really specific single situation, record those meetings. And so you'll still see those, those meetings being recorded. And then you're going to still take minutes, uh, in those closed meetings. Now, those minutes and recordings are protected under grandma. And so it's not that, that you have to worry that we're going to do this closed meeting and then all of a sudden, everybody in the public's just going to have access to those minutes and the recording. It is a private record under grandma and it's, it's not going to be disclosed to anybody, but there is this requirement that you keep track of it. I believe the purpose for that is if there is ever is some kind of a dispute over what, whether we acted according to the statute when we closed the meeting, a lawsuit's filed or something like that. Well, we want to have a record of what happened so that we could in private be able to show a judge, look, we filed the statute, this is what we did. Um, the only time where you don't, uh, do a recording is if you're doing the one that discusses the character, professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual or the security devices or systems. And in lieu of a recording, you can just do a sworn statement that everybody, uh, that is put together states, that's the purpose of the meeting and is signed and that it's exclusively for that purpose. And then you don't have to record this. Um, the last thing we'll cover real quick is just electronic meetings. And it's real, this is the one that I find pretty interesting because I bet during this legislative session, they're going to make some updates to this because prior to COVID, they had some, they already had electronic meeting, uh, statute that allowed us to do it. The city would have to pass its own, you know, any given city would have to pass its own ordinance kind of governing the electronic meetings, how it was going to happen, but the state allowed it already. Um, the one big thing was though, under the, under the statute before COVID, even if you had an electronic meeting, it was seen more like a way for somebody who maybe traveled for their job or something, um, a council person would be able to use the phone to call into the meeting and still be able to vote and participate. Uh, and that was the main purpose for these electronic meetings was, you know, you're still having the meeting in person down there at city hall. And then you have a person that can't make it, so they call in. Um, one of the requirements that still is in there unless, unless they change that coming up, uh, is that you still had to have an anchor location where a member of the public could still go and listen to or hear the meeting, even if others were doing it electronically. And so prior to COVID, it was always anticipated if we did an electronic meeting, we would still have city hall open where public, members of the public could come in and, and, you know, at least listen and, and possibly participate in the meeting that way. They did do an executive emergency order when COVID started that kind of did away with all that. And, you know, every city is just doing the best they can right now. Most cities are doing exactly what we are right now, where they're streaming it either on Zoom or YouTube. And then, you know, and, you know, the public can Where they're streaming it either on Zoom or YouTube and then, you know, and, you know, the public can watch that way. And so we're doing the same thing that everybody else is for the most part at this point. For a minute, a lot of people did try to do kind of a hybrid, even some people kind of went back, but then as the numbers went up as the winter started, most, most cities are doing what we are at this point. Hopefully, we get to this fairly soon and we're back to, back to normal, but last couple of things, you, you, you can remove a person from a public meeting if they're being disruptive. I only remember this happening one time where we had a disruptive person that was mad about a subdivision, but it was, it was interesting. It wasn't even the, a member of the public. It was somebody that did engineering work or something on it for the subdivision and was very upset, screaming and yelling. And so she had to be removed, but the, the open meetings statute allows for that to happen. We're not going to be, you know, successfully sued because we, we moved somebody out of there because they were disrupting our meeting. Just the, the final piece, I guess, why do we care, I guess? It is a statute that does have, have penalties attached to it. So if some city went rogue and just started doing all kinds of of things that violated the Open Meetings Act, the Attorney General and the county attorney offices around the state, they're charged with enforcing this. And so presumably, you know, if the complaint came in, the county attorney could investigate us and, you know, come after a city for not following the Open Meetings Act. And so, I mean, I think beyond that, I mean, every, everybody, I think, feels probably the same that the public ought to be involved. And I, I've never actually witnessed any instance of anybody wanting the public not to know what was going on. But if that wasn't enough for somebody, it is, you know, it does carry some penalties if we got, you know, went rogue or something like that. So anyway, with, with that, that's, that completes the training. That's all you guys need to know. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about open meetings while we're talking about it?
Thanks, Brandon. I just had one question. Back on the reasons why we close a meeting.
Yeah.
You mentioned that that had to be in the agenda.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't know ahead of time necessarily that we're going to close a meeting, right? That, that could happen mid-meeting, something would come up and we could say during the meeting, we want to close it. Or does that have to be on the agenda? That's already predetermined. We know we're going to do that.
Yeah, so ideally, the statute kind of plates that you already know that. So when you're going into putting the agenda together and remember, you just have to have the 24 hours advance notice. So let's say you put an agenda together, we can advance and you had no idea there was going to be an issue that warranted closing the meeting. As long as you know 24 hours in advance, the statute kind of plates that you're going to actually put that right on the agenda so that the public knows you're going to do a closed meeting. And then you would go into the public meeting and then it would be one of your line items and then you would vote to close the meeting. And then, of course, you'd go into your closed meeting. I mean, I, I suppose there would be a circumstance where you had something come up where you didn't have that 24 hour timeframe. I mean, potentially even right during the meeting. I think the statute under that emergency meetings case would give some leniency if it truly was something that, that came up, you know, right then. I think we would be okay, but I think we would want to be really careful that it was something like that, not something that we kind of already knew was a festering issue. If that's the case, it'd be better, you know, even if we were meeting on a Thursday, it would probably be better to, if we could, hold off and actually do it the way the statute wants us to, but, but yeah, that's a good question. If it came up right during the meeting and there was no other way to avoid it, we would do the best we could with, with following the, the statute to the letter, other than the noticing requirement that we wouldn't be able to do. But other than that, yeah, it's contemplated that you would know in advance. And so you put it on there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Usually the ones that we've done in the past have been like, the city might be involved in, you know, some kind of litigation either against us or we want to pursue litigation against somebody else and we want to strategize or whatever. And so you know about that. And so it's more of a way to bring in the council and update everybody on what's going on without it being public. Because a lot of times with those things, you know, the mayor probably knows about it, some of the city staff know about it. A lot of times council members don't really have a clue on the details of, of that kind of stuff. And so it's a great way to be able to update everybody with it being a closed meeting. And so you would know that in advance, so you would put it right on the agenda. That's why you were doing it.
Okay, awesome. Appreciate your expertise. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, you're in your car.
Yeah, no, it's okay. I'm, my kid's doing a soccer practice, so I'm just doing this while I wait. So, yeah. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Any other questions for Brandon? Okay, we'll move to final citizens' comments then. Is there any additional comments from?
Yeah, I don't have any citizen comment.
Okay. I'll just add one thing. Everybody probably got a copy of Sherry's email about Tomato Days just today. She's already put together an entire agenda for Tomato Days, Friday, Saturday, Monday. That's very forthcoming on her part. So thank you, Sherry, even though you're not on this meeting. I did email her one suggestion. I don't know how anybody else feels about this, but I asked her about maybe extending the parade route. Possibly starting at the city building and then going down 4600 and doing our regular parade route. But just a thought on that. It seems like it's getting bigger every year and there's more people packed into a smaller area, so just a thought.
And I would say, from being in the parade, no. Um, what I think, well, it doesn't matter what I think, but yeah, there's the subdivision by the church, you know, they all crowd there. And then there's a lot of empty the farther west you go. And so I don't know if we could bring out those bleachers again, you know, that's another time, another subject for another time. But as a person in the parade, not longer.
You could do what Cindy and I did two years ago. You could be in it twice. You're in it at first and then you hurry and get it in the back and you're in it twice.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say no to that.
Okay. Okay, anything else from the council? Or a motion to adjourn if anybody wants to?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll stack it.
Motion from Councilman Paulson and a second from Councilmember Cox. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.